Good evening and welcome to the September 7th meeting of the Oxford Board of Selectmen. First item on our agenda is approval of minutes. We have regular meeting minutes of August 3rd, 2021. All members were present and entertain a motion to approve.
I would make that motion, second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any comments? Call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, they are approved. Then we have executive session minutes for August 3rd, 2021. All of us were present and entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I make that motion, second.
And any comments? Call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, those minutes are approved. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing for a special permit for animals. I'll read the public hearing notice into the record as soon as I find it, which I don't have.
It's not there.
No.
I know now, but is anybody else?
No.
Oh, wait a second. Maybe it's towards the back. No. That's not it. Let me check.
Thank you very much. All right. In accordance with provisions of Chapter 3, Section 3.8 of the zoning bylaws of the town of Oxford, Susan Provost of 36 Watch Street, Rochdale, Mass. 01542, has applied to the Board of Selectmen for a new special permit for animals to keep up to a maximum of 15 chickens with no roosters at 36 Watch Street, Rochdale, Mass. 01542. The property is currently owned by Susan Provost and identified on Oxford Assessor's Map 02A, Parcel D04, and at the Registry of Deeds and Book 22398, Page 050. A public hearing will be held before the Oxford Board of Selectmen regarding this matter on Tuesday, September 7th, 2021, at 7:05 PM at the Oxford Town Hall, 325 Main Street, Oxford, Mass., Second Floor Conference Room. Okay. With that, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Make that motion, second.
I have a motion to open and a second. Any comments? Call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, the public hearing is now opened. All right. Is Ms. Provost here? Would she?
Yes, I'm Ms. Provost's chairman. I would just ask that if anybody had...
Could you just come up to the microphone, please, so people that...
This one right here.
Yeah.
I would just ask if anybody had any protests that they could talk first?
Yes.
So that I could address that?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you Mrs. Provost?
I'm Mrs. Provost.
Okay. Right. Yeah, this is a public hearing, so I just didn't know if you had anything to say before I bring Kelly up and she discusses.
No, not really. You know, I've been professional in animal care for years. The hens are about eight years old. They're not going to live much longer. My last child graduated from college. I'm traveling a lot, so I'm just kind of asking for permission to keep them until they pass away so they can spend their senior years where they've always been.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Yes, Kelly.
Do you want to swear everybody in now?
Oh, yes. That's right. Thank you. I'm glad people watch me. Anybody here? Excuse me?
No.
Anybody here that is speaking on this matter? If you would just raise your right hand and say, "I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God." Just say yes. Just say yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. All right, Kelly, if you want to... Welcome.
Hello. So Ms. Susan Provost, 36 Watch Street, has applied for a special permit to have, it was 16 chickens, but one chicken has passed away, on her property. Ms. Provost has had chickens on her property for many years and did not realize that she needed a special permit until recently. On Monday, April 5th, 2021, Allison Novak from the Oxford Board of Health contacted me about a complaint from Ms. Michelle Maderos from 38 Watch Street regarding rats in the empty building across the street and Ms. Provost's chickens. Ms. Maderos expressed concern that the chickens might be attracting the rats from the abandoned building. When Allison and I went into the empty apartment building, we observed copious amounts of rat feces on the floor and furniture. We also inspected Ms. Provost's chicken coop and found the coop to be clean and that fresh water and food was available to the chickens. The chicken feed was secured in a metal barrel with a lid. I spoke to Ms. Provost's neighbors at 38 Watch Street, Mr. Joshua Mason and Mr. Brian Gagnon. They informed me that they were in the process of purchasing 38 Watch Street from Ms. Maderos. They complained about the smell of the chickens, but I could not smell anything at this time. On Tuesday, June 1st, 2000... Oh, I put 2012. That's supposed to be 2021. I received a complaint from Mr. Mason and Mr. Gagnon about an odor from the chickens over the past weekend. They stated that their guests had to leave their cookout because they couldn't stand the odor from the chicken coop. I couldn't smell any bad odors at this time. Mr. Mason and Mr. Gagnon stated that they wanted the chicken coop moved away from the fence line, and Ms. Provost agreed that she would move the coop to the back in middle of her property. Ms. Provost applied for a special permit on July 13th, 2021, which shows the coop moved across her yard and further back, which would put the coop approximately 50 feet further away from the Mason-Gagnon property. I contacted Ms. Provost on Tuesday, August 31st, 2021, to see if she was ready for the selectment's hearing on September 7th, 2021, and discovered that she had not made any of the changes to the chicken coop placement. Ms. Provost explained that she was waiting to see if her permit was approved before she spent a lot of money on it. I canvassed Ms. Provost's neighbors on Wednesday, September 1st, 2021, to see if there was any opposition to having, to her having chickens on her property. Other than her neighbors at 38 Watch Street, the people that I spoke to were fine with her having chickens and stated that they haven't been a bother. Mr. Mason stated that he didn't really oppose Ms. Provost having chickens. He just wanted them moved away from his property line. Ms. Provost uses hanging fly traps to control any flies. Ms. Provost has a large composting drum to put waste products in, and she keeps her chicken food in a metal barrel with a lid to prevent a vermin infestation. Ms. Provost has been undecided as to whether she was going to relocate a shed that was already on her property, build a new coop, or buy a pre-made coop. Ms. Provost very recently decided to utilize the shed that was already on her property and moved it four feet further away from her property line to be in compliance with the law, which is 20 feet away from the property line. She renovated the inside of the shed to contain nesting boxes for the chickens as well as a door out to the pen. The outdoor pen is near completion, but it is lacking predator proofing on the bottom and a small section of fencing at the top. The work that has been completed so far is acceptable, but I cannot recommend that the board approve the special permit until the predator proofing is completed. It is my recommendation that the hearing be continued until September 21st, 2021, with the understanding that Ms. Provost will complete the pen and I will inspect it before that date.
All right. Very good, Kelly. Thank you very much for your hard work.
Any questions?
Yeah, we'll get to... Is there anybody in the audience? We had some people that if you want to come up, state your name and address for the record and just sit at the desk so people at home can hear you. Thank you.
Hey there, I'm Brian Gagnon and I live at 38 Watch Street.
I'm Joshua Mason. I live at 38 Watch Street.
So just a couple of things that we wanted to bring up about it. So we were following the guidelines for the permit to apply for the permit for animals in the town, and it stated, number six, that the applicant's responsible for sending a public hearing notice to a butters via certified mail, and the return receipts and green cards need to be supplied to the Board of Selectmen's office. We were in immediate a butter and never received any notice, so I'm wondering if any receipts have been handed to the selectmen.
...the process. We no longer do certified mail, and that was the application packet was from the internet. It may not change because we started after. But all letters were sent by me and you have a note in your packet that shows that it got returned to us today for a wrong address because the, your dean from the registry where the assessor's office gets the address said you lived in North Oxford, but you live in Rochdale. So it got returned to us, but I did email it to...
Okay. All right. Yep.
If you recall, you have a...
All right.
We're given a copy on August 25th.
Yeah, I was just covering that basis there. And then the other part that I wanted to talk about is mostly that... So the original chicken coop was a serious issue. We appreciate the movement of moving it more towards the center of the yard because it was 20 feet from our bedroom window, basically. And my issue is that the properties are only a third of an acre or a quarter of an acre, depending on where it is. There's not enough land to sustain having 15 chickens and having them be far enough away, even if they are further in the property. We do still get a smell when we're in the backyard on hot days. At nights, if it is a breezy night, other nights are fine. But breezy nights, we have to run AC instead of have our window open. It does just blow right in. And then our other issue is that I see that she does have a waste disposal system, but Susan has been known to put trash along the property line, and I feel like after this, she will continue to dump even chicken waste along the property line if she has it available. We do have pictures of her dumping trash all the way along the property line, too. It's a common occurrence with her. And we're just worried that the chickens are just going to be another thing for her to use to retaliate against us.
Okay. We thank you for your comments. We'll consider those in deliberation. All right. Thank you. Anyone else from the public that would like to speak? All right. Not seeing any, then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make that motion, second.
And I will call for...
Dee.
Excuse me?
Do...
I wasn't sure if you were continuing. Can we get your continuing to... Is it open?
Yes, Kelly's asking for a continuance.
Yeah. Okay. Good point. All right. So do we want to...
Well, we closed the Oxford Road one, but continued it for further discussion.
Right.
Could we do that?
That's what I...
Would that preclude Kelly from giving us an update?
I would say that if you're, if the mutual applicant and the animal control officer agrees to actually continue the hearing based on, you can make the continuance based on correspondence that you receive because once you close the public hearing, technically, you're not supposed to entertain further comments unless the applicant and the town agrees for a continuance to allow that to happen. Remember, we did do that one other time. So, you know, if you're not prepared to deliberate tonight, then you can just continue it. But I would say that as long as the applicant and the animal control officer is willing to do that.
I'm confused.
So basically, if we could ask Ms. Provost if she's okay with closing the hearing but continuing deliberation to consider what animal control officer would have on the 21st, or we could just leave it open and continue it until the 21st and then allow more public comment on the 21st. Did I...
You're closing the public comment, period? You're not closing the entire public hearing? But you can make it, I would believe, conditional on the information you receive from the ACO, but then it becomes your deliberation.
I thought we were just closing public comment by closing the public hearing. And then we deliberate after that. That's what I presume we've done all along. So I thought I was doing the same thing, that we... That way, there we're done with the public comment. We then would, yeah, then re-continue this, you know, for the deliberation till that meeting and continue on. That's what we've done in the past, so that's why I asked for that.
Just for lack of confusion, I think we should just continue, like, just make a motion to continue until...
Well, it's up to them if they want to take their motion off the floor, so...
Right.
However...
Yeah, I think you're right. We've done it.
Yeah.
What you suggested...
I think Dee was thinking you were closing the hearing altogether, and that's not, yeah.
Yeah. I'm going to leave it.
Okay.
So that we can continue to deliberate.
Correct. That's how we've always done it, you know? Because I got in trouble because I didn't close the public hearing, so I tried to really sit...
I think you're right.
All right. So we're going to just close the public comment of the public hearing, that kind of...
Yep. And that was your motion.
Right.
And that was the second.
All right. Then with that, I'll call for a vote.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That's for an affirmative. The public comment of the public hearing is closed. So now, I'd entertain a motion then to continue this to September 21st.
I would make a motion to continue... 21st, 21.
Second.
All right. Any comments on that? And I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, we have continued this to September 21st, and hopefully by then, we get that all straightened away. Right? Thank you. And thank you all for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda is the Batlet Pond Dam Project. Glenn Travasky, is he here? I do not see him. All right. Then we'll come back to that maybe. How about, oh, I miss, how do I... Excuse me. Wow, it's supposed to be 7:30, so, yeah, let's... I'll go to the general license application and waive a fee for the First Congregational Church.
What letter is that?
F.
F. So we have application from the First Congregational Church requesting to hold a lawn party for their 300th anniversary. We have a list of the activities and we've got a complete application. And unless the board has other issues, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I would make a motion that the board approve the general license for the First Congregational Church to hold the 300th anniversary lawn party gathering and to waive the fee for this license pursuant to the board's policy number 602.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any comments? Call for a vote then.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's for an affirmative. We have approved that. Good luck with that, and we also waived the fee. That brings us to the next item, which is, I don't know if she's here. It's Lauren Gilbert, right?
Hello.
This is G, yeah, New England Race Events, Midstate Ultra Trial Race. All right. Do we have anybody from that association? Oh, okay. Okay, cool. Well, we have an application from the Ultra Trial Race, thank you, New England Race Events, to hold a mid-state massive ultra trial race in Oxford. And the event will take place on October 9th through the 10th. We have gotten the roadmap and we've gotten that information in our packet. What I'm told, Chief Saden and Chief Laurent are okay with this. Jared Duval is going to be consulted for the food track traffic, foot traffic, I should say, over the Sackarack Bridge. Everything looks fine to me. I'll entertain a motion from the board for whatever.
I would make a motion to allow the New England Race Events to hold their mid-state massive ultra trail race using the courses outlined in material submitted to the Oxford Board of Selectmen and following the parameters outlined in the 2021 Midstate Massive Ultra Trail Runners Handbook, subject to the Sackarack Bridge being open to foot traffic.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any comments? Call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, they are approved. Good luck with that event.
It's a lot of miles.
No, it's 7:40.
So...
Not quite yet.
Let's go to H, which is school department surplus request. We have from Justin Ledoux that he's asking that the items that are listed in our memo of August 2nd, 2021, be reallocated or deemed surplus. We have a list of those. Pictures. Entertain a motion to approve that request.
I'd make a motion that the board declare the items listed in a certain memo dated August 2nd, 2021, and Justin Ledoux, School Business Administrator, a surplus.
Second.
Any comments? Call for a vote?
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, those items are surplus. So we go to Mass Cultural Council... Letter of Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I can speak to this. So we had a lack of members enough on the Cultural Council where there was a little bit of a hiatus in the number of meetings that they were having. And I think part of it was also because of COVID, but most of it was we had members who lived in town who had moved away. And because they did not have enough members, the state, who gives us a certain amount of money every year to use for cultural events, did not give the town the money at that time. And so now they're very pleased because we have enough members and are willing for fiscal year '21 to be able to pass those funds to us for fiscal year '22, so the town will actually still be able to spend the money that they couldn't spend last year with the complement of this year's money from fiscal year '22. So basically, they're asking, at this point in time, a letter of agreement, basically saying that they're going to give the, an extension to be able to allow the town to use not just this year's but also last year's money, which would be very helpful to the Cultural Council's planning events. I didn't want to lose the money because of the lack of members.
Board members, entertain a motion.
Make a motion that the board allow Chairman Dennis Marsh to execute a letter of agreement in response to the Massachusetts Cultural Council pursuant to correspondence from NCC dated August 11th, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's for an affirmative. Thank you for that motion and that vote. That brings us to J. Okay. Oxford Lions Club requests to hold food drives Saturday, October 2nd, from 10:00 to 2:00 PM at Joslin Park. This is a request from Fran Kane. On behalf of the Oxford Lions Club, everything looks good to me. I would entertain a motion to approve from the board.
Make a motion that the board approve that... To allow the Oxford Lions Club to hold a food drive at Joslin Park on Saturday, October 2nd, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Second.
Any comments on that motion and a second? Now call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's for an affirmative. They are approved. And we should wait. Okay.
It's a quick one. K is quick as well.
We'll go to... Okay. Articles for special town meetings submitted by the planning board.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you have before you a town planner on behalf of the planning board has put three proposed articles for town meeting warrant. And as you know, prior to that occurring, that the board must vote to allow the articles to be submitted by the planning board to be placed on the special town meeting warrant as long as they go through their normal process. So one is the general zoning bylaw amendment, Chapter 76, registration and maintenance of vacant and foreclosing properties. The second is a proposed zoning bylaw amendment to the chapter dealing with the marijuana overlay district. And the third is a zoning bylaw amendment to Chapter 3, Use Regulations, the storage of unregistered motor vehicles.
I'd entertain a motion to place him on the town meeting warrant.
I would make that motion.
Uh, second.
All right.
Sorry.
You say that, you... Yes. Go right ahead, my dear.
So, Mr. Chair, I have a question. Is that something that...
Excuse me. There is no talking in the audience, please. Go ahead.
Well, I have a question.
So...
Sorry, sir.
What do you mean, sorry, sir? I have a question.
Sir, sir, there is no talking in the audience, okay? You're disrupting the meeting.
So why do we want to have an audience if we can't ask questions?
That's fine, sir. That you have all right to be here and...
You have the right to ask questions.
Excuse me, sir, I'm not going to argue. I'm going to ask you to cease. Thank you. Go ahead, Chairman.
Nice.
I mean...
That's your turn.
All right.
Thank you, though. With this, I just want to just make sure that I'm understanding the language real quick before I vote yes or no. The first one, it says that it's specific to vacant and foreclosing properties. Am I understanding that correctly? Because I thought that the unregistered motor vehicles, one was for all properties regardless of status before, and I might be misunderstanding that?
The unregistered vehicles is part of Chapter 3. Whereas the, the...
I understand that.
Okay.
But this is getting rid of Chapter 3, the way I'm reading it, and incorporating it into the first one that we have. But the way I'm reading is that it's specific to vacant and foreclosing properties?
I don't actually know because these articles get referred back to the planning board for them to deliberate on. And rather than, in this town, when we have actual articles that are like that, we do make a reference back to the planning board for them to do diligence and then to be able to make a determination on, you know, whether they support them or not. I mean, I know we do have, I think, Tony Sousa in the audience, but I don't know if this is the time where you would really want to talk about the articles since you would like the planning boards. I mean, it's up to you. You could come forward. It's up to you.
Well, if I can ask a follow-up question that might just save a bunch of the confusion. Once it goes back to the planning board, does it come back to us again to approve it being put on...
The warrant.
The warrant?
Yes, yes, yeah. So, no.
Like, if we approve this, if the planning board approves it, does it automatically go onto the warrant? Or this just allows...
No. No, you, you guys will have the final determination to approve the articles on the warrant. But this is the process that's been here since, long before I was here.
I just wanted to make sure that that was still going to be.
Yep.
The way in that I understood it. Okay. So, I'll wait to ask specifics about it until it's in its final stages.
Well, and I would also recommend that once the planning board have their hearing, that people listen to that as well. That would be great.
Right, right. That's more of what I wanted to.
Yep.
Make sure this wasn't like the end-all-be-all.
No.
For the board's involvement in it.
And, and they, they have meetings on this where you're able to comment also.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they'll have a public hearing on it.
Yeah, which I'll, I just wanted to make sure that I understood that and that the public could understand that as well, so.
I understand that completely.
So I'll also, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? All right, then I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That's three in affirmative, one no, but they will be passed on to the planning board. Thank you. All right. And that brings us to. Continued public hearing for a special permit for earth removal at 19 Oxbow Road. And we have closed the public comment of this, so we are in deliberation with the, with the peop- the applicant, so. Welcome again. Hopefully, we can get this done. Jared is here. Jared, would you like to come up and just kind of give us a refresher of the last time you guys were supposed to get with the applicant? And kind of finalize some things for the board?
Okay. You hear me okay? Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for having me. Yeah, so, since we last had met on this item, going back from the original public hearing, April 20th, and then a continued public hearing on June 1st, and then June 15th, DPW was charged with cooperating with the applicant to address some concerns that were raised both by the public, you know, the abutters to the project, and the board as well. So, I have a memo that I'd sent to the town manager this afternoon. Hopefully, you all have that in front of you. The primary concerns of which.
I interrupt you because I didn't do a couple of things, so. I need to read the public hearing into the notice, notice into the record again. So if you excuse me. In accordance with provisions of the Oxford zoning bylaw, Chapter 18, the Oxford Board of Selectmen has received an application from S&amp;K Development, LLC, 710 Main Street, P.O. Box 744, North Oxford, Mass. 01537, for a special permit for earth removal on land located at 19 Oxbow Road, Oxford Assessors Map 09, Basel A-21. Please take notice that the Oxford Board of Selectmen will continue the public hearing concerning this public, special permit for earth removal to Tuesday, September 7th, 2021, at 7:30 p.m. This hearing has been continued from the Selectmen's meeting of August 17th, 2021, and June 15th, 2021, and June 1st, 2021, with the original hearing date of April 20th, 2021. This meeting will be held in the second-floor conference room of the Town Hall, which is located at 325 Main Street, Oxford, Mass. Written comments from the public were accepted prior to this meeting and can be submitted into the record at the hearing. I am also going to invoke the rule of necessity because we only have four board members and we need four board members to approve this permit if we so do so. So, thank you. I had to get that. I stepped ahead of myself, so.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll introduce myself, too. I didn't, hadn't done that. My name's Jared Duval, DPW Director. So, going back to the first three public meetings that led up to this point, essentially, the primary concerns that were raised by the board and by the abutters were, first of all, there was a question and concern about the potential impacts to abutting wells, water quality, and static water levels in those wells. There was also a question with regards to current market rates of gravel to try to estimate what the potential revenue that would be generated on site because of this earth removal operation. There was also a question of, or concern about roadway degradation and how that would be exacerbated based on the increase in truck traffic associated with this operation. There was also a concern about the increased truck traffic, obviously, the narrow roadway, and some safety concerns related to, obviously, the increase in truck traffic, but also sightlines from, for trucks entering and exiting the site, as well as for trucks as they, you know, exit for no conflicts with the traveling public on that street. The board also requested that we investigate potential mitigation in the form of roadway rehabilitation at the end of the project. So those are all of things that I kind of worked with the applicant and their engineer to address those concerns. And if you like, I could kind of summarize this latest memorandum that just kind of will get you up to speed where we're at to date. So, going through here, as a result of our discussions and a concern over the sightlines and safety due to that proposed driveway access point, the applicant and their engineer came back to us with a proposed alternate driveway location. What that would mean with, and what would that mean for this project? And I tend to agree that the new location would improve lines of sight for vehicles, for trucks exiting that site. It does mean that that driveway is now located over the town's parcel on the corner of Oxbow Road, that sharp inside curve there, which appears that the town may have in the past done some clearing and a bit of earth removal there just to improve sightlines. So what this does is, not only does it improve the lines of sight, it also shortens the length of Oxbow Road that would be impacted by the traveling, you know, the truck traffic and that operation. It also moves away from some of the abutters where a lot of those exiting trucks will be. There's still going to be some impacts there, obviously. So, there's consideration there. There'd have to be some form of agreement between the town and the applicant to allow a temporary easement or right-of-entry over that property, an agreement stipulating that the town wouldn't be held harmless for any damage or injuries that may occur within that temporary driveway easement, and that the applicant would restore that to equal or as better condition after the culmination of the project, if we were to go forward with entering into that agreement, allowing that temporary easement, essentially. So, as a result, whether the driveway is located at their proposed location now, or whether we allow them to, or the board allows them to use that town parcel, and I'll let, I'll let Mika speak to that a little later, that what their intent is for that property, what they would pursue later on. They would plan to try to buy that property off the town, but I'll, I don't want to steal his thunder. Regardless of where that location is, in this memo, you can see that there's some MUTCD compliance signage that we would expect to see along the roadway, this orange retro reflective signage that we'd want to see in advance of the points of egress from the property. And then there was also a question about the potential for flaggers and police details to try to control traffic. I, I do think that there was discussion in previous meetings about sort of piggybacking per se on any work the state may be doing on Route 20 as part of their major corridor improvements. I don't think we can, for the case of this permit, rely on their schedule or work plan in that area. And that's to say that I think the, there should be a special condition, and it's included in these recommended conditions in this memo, that they're responsible for police details and/or flaggers at those locations at the intersection of Route 20, you know, to facilitate the trucks entering Route 20 safely. We had done, DPW had done an analysis on the number of truck trip, tricks, excuse me, truck trips to and from the site, just to try to, you know, generate, you know, what the potential impact was, assuming sort of a 50/50 spread between triaxle dump trucks and end dumps. It's, it's really dependent on what, you know, the, the market is and what trucks are going to and from the site on a daily basis. But we, for an average per day rate of trucks during the construction season estimated from April 15th to November 15th, we figured that at about maybe 13 trucks per day, truck trips. And annually, that's about a little over 9,000 truck trips to and from the site, based on that analysis. As it pertains to the potential for mitigation and rehabbing the roadway as a condition of the approval of this, this permit, we did look into that, too. Back at one of the earlier meetings, I think it was ahead of the June 15th meeting, we had done a cost estimate to reclaim and pave the road within the limits that were specified. That estimate came back at $160,000 for that work. That includes all labor, materials, prevailing wages. Since then, in considering the applicant's proposal for an alternative driveway location, that actually shortens, as we mentioned, shortens the impact to the roadway. We also shortened the length in considering that DOT's project is going to move, they're going to realign Oxbow Road at Route 20. So if we assume that we're tying into that location, that shortens the, the limit that they would be responsible for potentially. So in considering that, our latest estimate is $80,000 approximately for that rehabilitation work. Now, what we looked at, and what I had discussed with the applicant at our meeting at the DPW office on August 5th, was that I had reported to the board that the pavement condition index on Oxbow is at a 50 out of 100. So it's a 50% of the pavement life has already been consumed before they put a shovel in the ground and do any earth removal. And over a five-year period, which is the permit duration, we would expect to see, without the added truck traffic under normal conditions, about a two-point drop per year. So that, we would expect the PCI to maybe fall to a 40 in that time. So looking at the added truck traffic, we can expect that that's going to be expedited, right, that degradation? So we can assume, and this is pretty industry standard, would be that it'd be about double that rate, is what we're assuming. This is kind of a simplified assumption analysis, but that's the best we have to go off at this point, not knowing the truck loading and the frequency and some of the existing conditions of the road. So if that's the case, over five years, we'd expect that PCI to fall to around a 30. So because of the added truck traffic, DPW, we're estimating that they're using up an additional 10% of life over the course of their project, potentially. So with that being said, and based on our discussions with the applicant, it seems like they may be open to a potential contribution to the town's coffers for any future roadway rehabilitation, when the town, when the DPW plans that roadwork. What that amount is, is not been decided, so perhaps that'll be fleshed out tonight. But, and, and we had discussed at that point that maybe it was upwards of half the cost. So, I'll let the applicant speak to that and what is economically viable for them. And as far as maintenance, I also had done a, a quick estimate here for added maintenance costs during the life of the project over that five years, and figure about a $3,500, you know, increased cost due to maintenance that DPW will have to undertake on the roadway. That way, we're not putting that as a condition on the applicant where they're maintaining, you know, they're not in our right-of-way during the course of construction. That's something that we can do throughout the project. So, that would be an additional $3,500 contribution that I'm recommending as part of the, the approval, if the board decides. And I won't go through each of the special conditions here, but there is a recommend, and these are, this precedent set in previous earth removal permits, a lot of these are straight from prior earth removal permits. We did add, or I should say, I added some language under site reclamation. The, the language in here where it says the applicant is responsible for reclamation of the site and any off-site impacts resulting from the permitted earth removal operation, that was in there previously. That's from prior permits, so there is a bit of precedent for a requirement for off-site impacts, which could be interpreted as the roadway. So there's language in there about the potential for a contribution towards, you know, refurbishing the road. And then there was language added in the public safety condition, SC 13, for flagger and, and police detail officer requirements. And then the other unique condition here was, and this had been discussed at a, a previous meeting, and I discussed this with the applicant outside of public meetings, was the groundwater monitoring and testing requirements during the course of the work. They, they have a monitoring well leased, or a series of monitoring wells to evaluate static water levels in abutting wells and on the si- on the site. And then that they perform recurring water quality testing on abutting wells. That's something that they had proposed, and I'll let them speak to that if that's something that they would still consider. But that's in here as well, in these draft conditions. So that's kind of a, a general overview where, where we are to date in our discussions with the applicant. I don't know if you want to let the applicant now maybe follow up and?
Just quickly, I don't want to miss, what is the $3,500 for roadway maintenance that you're?
So anticipating, just for if we have delamination, potholes, anything that could be happening during the course.
During the course.
Yeah, during the course of the project, the five-year duration that we're.
Would have nothing to do with some sort of security for helping to fix the road when they're done?
Exactly. I was thinking that, well, that could be a part of the potential contribution for the roadway refurbishment, rehabilitation, whatever you want to say, and whether we pull some of that during, for some general upkeep, that's, yeah, that was the general idea there. Mr. Chairman?
Board members, questions for Jared with his proposal? Yes?
First of all, thank you very much. I appreciate this. And thank you to the applicants as well. I know this has been. A little long, to say the least. And thank you to the residents as well for their input and comments and, and very, very helpful for us to understand this. And I, again, I just wanted to say thank you to Jared for, and the applicant for, you know, coming up with something relatively reasonable. So thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Anyone else?
I don't have a question for Jared per se, although, thank you for the work that you've been putting in on this. We've been focusing in a lot, just questions for Jared, and we'll get to other questions after, or?
Oh, yeah, sure. I, I just figured while he was there.
Okay.
In case, you know, I mean, I had that question. That was, I didn't understand that, so I don't know if others had. I didn't want to, you know, hog the question in.
Yeah. I have a question for the applicant.
Go ahead.
So, we've been focusing a lot on the dump trucks. Who's doing the excavation work? Is that, S&amp;K is doing the excavation work?
Probably higher out.
Higher out? Okay. So, we did a lot of work for the dump trucks, but then we never really considered, not to throw another wrench into this, but we never really considered the trucks bringing in the excavators, the trucks bringing out the excavators. How long are the excavators going to stay on site? I know at one point there was talk about. Bringing in rock crushers and stuff, too. That's just additional added traffic onto the street and trying to get access into the property versus, you know, shutting down the street while you pull the excavators off and then bring them on the property, because the road is very tight. So, I don't know. How that would add in, because I'm assuming if you're subbing out, you're not going to sub out, you know, two, three excavators for five years to sit on the property if they're not being used.
Well, that's going to really depend on market and how much demand. A lot of times, when you have an earth removal project, the equipment's brought in and it's left there until it's, it's completed. And again, it's really, conditions arise if they need the piece of equipment and they take it off. But if it's being productive and on the property, that I would assume they leave the equipment there as much as possible because there is a cost associated with, with moving it. I don't know, Jim agrees with that?
Yes.
Okay, is there something else you'd like to say?
Well, well, just.
I'd be curious about that roadway. I didn't quite understand the location of that new driveway, so personally.
Yeah, so I, the board. The previous, on the Oxbow Road, then we had our previous access point here, along an existing frontage. Along this portion of Oxbow, we also have 29 feet of frontage. But if we were to use that 29 feet of frontage, we'd be flipping off the buffer that's to the King property. We theoretically could use it, but it's really not meaning what the, you know, abutters concerns with buffers to their properties. So we're proposing on this corner piece, there's this odd-shaped piece of property that the town did in an earth removal project years ago. Ultimately, if the applicant could purchase it, that would be an option. However, to go through that process is a long, hump to bid, and it's not a guarantee that our, our plant would end up with a high is better when we purchase it. So since the town owns this piece of land, the suggestion that we were proposing was to give a temporary access easement to allow trucks, instead of coming onto Oxbow and doing a 90-degree turn out, using that slope of the road coming in at a gentle slope out to Oxbow Road, it would shorten our distance around that bend by about four to 500 feet. It would eliminate the traffic via McDonald property. And also, because we're coming, instead of coming to a, taking a hard left turn and braking, it enables us to have a better sight distance to the left. And also, as we're entering the property, the trucks don't have to come, almost completely stop to enter into the property. They, they have that, they can turn in and the, what they have on the hill, it just makes for easier access into the piece. But to do that, obviously, we have, we had proposed for our access, temporary stormwater during construction. We would do something along those lines, along our property and portion of it beyond to the town's property, so the language of the tower. to the town's properties or the language of the tower, or does to entertain allowing a temporary access during the property. We need to also do a temporary erosion control measures on that. And also, and here, the grade, as, as we go down, it gets a little bit steeper along our frontage, the part of the town that cleared is, is much more level, so that's kind of what we're hoping to propose as a potential. Because the other question with flaggers, because you point out it's hard to see coming onto there, that, that was one of the flagger comments, was that we have people out here. And there was also questions that we have somebody here. And our, our goal was, okay, this is going to be retrofitted here at some point, so we get a mitigation, that we'd be limiting our mitigation by, from fifteen hundred feet to like a little over, almost a thousand feet, by, by a third.
Where's the closest residence to that driveway?
Me, right across the street.
Or right nearby directly.
Yep. Very directly.
Uh-
Rocks, driveway.
Excuse me, no comments, please, from the, thank you. All members, yes, show.
I have another question. This one is for, is a question for Jared. So Jared, if, if we were to, if this were to be approved, and, and the applicant is willing to contribute to the overall maintenance of the road, and then towards the end of the project, they're contributing to the overall rebuild or reconstruction of the road or whatnot, and maybe this is for the town manager as well, but, you know, could it be that there's an understanding that when the project is done, that that road be addressed immediately or within the realm of that particular fiscal year, so that, you know, I don't want to get to the end of the project and, and find out, oh, well, you know, Oxbo Road is, you know, three years down the road, you know, you know, we've got something else, you know. Can there be an understanding of that sort, that that can be on the list of repairs and reconstruction?
I, I think that's fair to say. What we would do is knowing that this project's been going on for five years, and we program out, right now, we're working on a three-year plan, but we could program that, you know, outside of five years to say, we'd force that into our program.
Yeah.
I think that that's, knowing that what the residents would potentially endure out there and, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, that was my question.
Other questions, board members? Yes?
I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure that I already know the answer, but I just want to confirm that the contribution to the road would be in addition to what we receive upfront for the bond, correct?
That, that was the way I was thinking of this, and I think that's the way that we discussed it as well. So I think there's a thirty-five-hundred-dollar-per-acre bond, and that this-
Thirty-five or twenty-five hundred?
I believe it's thirty-five hundred.
Here it says thirty-five hundred per acre disturbance per acre of land in the paperwork that we have from Jared.
I'm, I'm just going by what your bylaws online.
But I just wanted to make sure that the money that we're talking about for road would be in addition to the money that we're collecting for the bond.
Yeah, because, yep, sorry. The bond would really be in the event that, if the developer, if they left the site, that money's really to restore-
Right.
Or stabilize the site.
Clean it up.
Not the road, exactly, so.
I just wanted to-
Yep.
Make sure I was understanding it correctly, that it, they were two separate things.
Mm-hmm. Yep, you're right.
I piggyback on that. With that, so you're going to know beforehand what the disturbance area is. You won't disturb anything beyond so many acres or whatever, because if we're talking thirty-five per acre disturbance, I thought we were talking about the whole lot, thirty-five-hundred, you know. You know what I'm saying? Because you've got to come up with that figure, what happens if they say, well, we're only going to do five acres and they end up doing seven, you know, something like that.
So their plan, I think, I saw a reference to three point four acres in maybe an earlier letter, but I believe the plan called for three point seven, so-
Yeah, three point seven.
So three point seven acres, that's been determined based on their proposal.
It comes up, I kind of want to double check that number. I thought it was twenty-five hundred per acre, but that was the documentation that we were provided when we applied. That was, that was the number that was in the documentation that we received, twenty-five-hundred per acre. So I don't know, I know there was some, some potential changes down the road.
This may have been adapted to from a previous earth removal, we may have bumped that up, so, just because that number wasn't changed in here, so that might have been the case.
Okay, yeah, because I'm like, I distinctly remember twenty-five hundred, that's with the documents. But, but that being said, the properties, I was talking with Jim about this, the property is six acres, I mean, if the board is comfortable with, okay, we have it six acres, we do six, six times twenty-five hundred dollars, or if it's thirty-five hundred dollars, have that be the bond, if that adds a level of security as, as we progress, because ultimately we will be altering probably more than the three point seven acres to, so, if that gives a comfort level.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have one, I apologize.
You can have as many as you want, that's what we're doing.
So one of the things that, as difficult as this process has been, right, and long, you know, and so forth, as, as challenging as it has been to go through this, you know, one of the things that I've noticed is that I appreciate the willingness to work with us and kind of make this, you know, palatable for as many as possible and so forth. One might say that we've enjoyed a good relationship trying to move this forward and, and, you know, resolute something somewhere. If the permit were granted, I would like to know that the good relationship that we've developed will continue, and that if there are issues, if there are concerns, if there are questions, you know, that we as a board, through Jared, through the residents or whatnot, I'd like to get some sort of assurance that we can still enjoy that type of business relationship going forward.
I think the applicant wouldn't check to that at all.
Okay, great.
I mean, again, they're a business owner town and-
Yes.
Just on the street, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Also?
I have comments for, for us as, as we move forward into the next section.
Anything else from the applicant?
I just, one just general question or comment, as you, as you, as you decide on conditions of approval, I'm just, again, looking at how your bylaws are written and what is expected and required is fairly clearly spelt out, so additional, anything on top of it, as far as road repairs, obviously, the applicant is open to making contributions to those, but again, the, that they're not bearing the full cost of road construction, and even the limits of monitoring typically, I think the applicant's probably open for, for monitoring wells at the low point of the property. I would, I would think one would suffice on this particular property. And typically, how that's done is with earth removal projects, still around, around the perimeter of a quarry or a, a, earth removal op, operation, they would install a few wells, but I'm talking, these are sites that are a hundred acres and they may have four or five wells. Here, we have a site that's six acres, so having multiple monitoring wells, it really seems overkill to some degree, but I think the applicant's probably open to having some testing of some of the abutting wells that are in close proximity or some of the closer proximity wells, or especially ones that have noted that they had a concern. There was one with a, what, new water filtration system that had gone in, I believe it was the, I think it was the King property, actually. So there's, I think the applicant's open to having those types of things done, but in the, moving in the future, I'm thinking, there's additional conditions that'd be updated in the, in the bylaw.
Thank you for your comments. All right, board members, what shall we do?
I think we need to spend monetary amounts, or is that something we can leave up for Jared in the afternoon? I mean, we have to, we, so we have to determine what we think is most important.
I would, yeah, I, I personally would like to have, you know, it's easier to say, yeah, well, we'll talk about it, but, you know, um, I, I do have a concern about the road, because it's a lot of truck traffic and, and, you know, and so I, I, I really think there should be some consideration there for that roadway. So, yeah, whether-
Just doing some quick math, the seventy-five thousand cubic yards at fourteen dollars an hour is over a million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Fourteen an acre, you mean, or fourteen?
Fourteen a cubic yard, and they're pulling out seventy-five thousand cubic yards. That's over a million dollars that they're making, and-
That's gross.
That's gross, yeah. And Jared's estimate would be eighty thousand for the reconstruction of that portion of the road.
Can I speak to that?
Sure, yes, you're part of the app, could you come up so that the people can, at home can hear you? Yes.
Jim Smith, S and K. So you're estimating, James Smith. James, okay. Jim. So you're estimating, I, I didn't quite hear that.
If my math is right, seventy-five thousand cubic yards times fourteen dollars on the lower end per cubic yard, that puts you over-
No, 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 no. So we, we now have projects going on right now, and we're not getting two dollars in the bank. So that's two dollars a yard. So your, your, your estimation is crazy.
But it's not his, it's our, our-
Yeah, but market rate for gravel right now. I mean, what product are you producing here and what, what are you trying to sell? I mean, you've talked, we've talked about-
We're not processing, so we're just, we're just taking and they're hauling away. So you don't, we don't, the quality of, of the material there isn't, so we, we have almost the identical sand in Auburn. We're getting two dollars in the bank. That's it.
This is, you're a subcontractor then that's really doing the front, you're, you're subbing out the entirety of this, it sounds like, a lot of this earth removal.
So we'll get a dirt guy, dirt guy will come in and take the, the material. Through this whole entire thing, the only thing we wanted to do was to build three nice house lots. The whole idea of this entire project is to leave, you've been out to that site, right? You've seen it, they left it in just disarray. There are banks that are just caving in. All we want to do is bring that back to, to exactly what the town did. They made a nice level area, that's all we want to do. That's it. There isn't, there's, there's no hidden cost of coming out of there. The site work to bring that to where we need to bring is almost a break even. There's no money in the gravel removal out there, or very little. It's, I'm hoping to, it's the truth. I'll, I'll sell it to you right now. There's, there's no, all we're trying to do is build three nice house lots. That's it. So if it becomes too cost prohibitive, we'll go and we'll just leave the banks like they are, and we'll put three houses on the hill, because we'll have that right. I don't want to do that, I want to build a product that someone would want to live in. Well, I know, but, but-
Excuse me. Excuse me. No comments?
I, I thought I'd been very open and honest from the beginning.
You have been.
So I, I'm just trying to correct the fact that you think there's a big cash win there, there's not. That's all.
I think the way that we, well, at least for myself, interpreted earth removal operation was that this was going to be essentially a quarry where you'd, you'd be selling a, a processed material at, at the end of the project, so that, that was-
No, to, to, so, you know, I can give you the gentleman's name that's doing the work over in Auburn, if you want to talk to him. There's, that's basically what you get in the bank. It's one thing if you're, let's say, aggregate who, who's, who makes and processes that, it's a totally different thing altogether. This is to just to deal with how the site's been left. That's all.
Got it. And then, I'm sorry, the three houses, and then the goal is to-
To build three nice homes.
Got it.
That's from the get-go.
That's all that, yeah.
That, that, that's why we purchased the property.
In five years?
Excuse me.
As, as soon as possible. I, I just, it's, it's driven by the market, because the cost of doing a construction and doing that site work is going to be offset by the removal of the gravel.
Agreed.
That's it. There's not, there's no magic in this whatsoever, and every which way we could accommodate, I've tried. And I thank, you know, Jared for working with us, because-
Got it.
Okay.
That was helpful.
Thank you.
Mike, do you have other questions or?
Just, I mean, again, what, what people have already voiced during the discussions, it's, it's a five-year permit, renewable three times, like you just mentioned, it's, it's a market variable, so they could go scrape the top layer off and not do any work for the next five years, renew. And now we've had a dust pit with no vegetation, that's, I mean-
That's what the bond's for. Bond is if, you know, they would do that, and we don't have to renew a permit for, you know, in the future, would, not necessarily, if they did, if they felt that the, the area was not being pro, kept up properly, I mean, that's up to the board at the time. I know, I know what you're saying there.
I get it.
So, board members, I don't see us being able to really approve this unless we had a figure for the roadway, if we want to put that in our conditions.
So, Jared, the reconstruction would be approximately eighty thousand.
Right.
The road is already at fifty percent, so I personally think it's completely unreasonable to expect them to-
Correct.
Pay a hundred percent, because-
I, I agree.
It's already at fifty percent. I mean, looking at Jared is saying, it's going to make it go about ten percent over the life of the project, over the five years. So I, I mean, I don't think we should be considering anything over the halfway point, personally, because it's at halfway right now. I do agree that we should probably incorporate the thirty-five hundred that Jared suggested, or the maintenance, should there pop up a big pothole or something that needs to be built immediately, so that way the money is there in the coffers that we can just take from it and do the maintenance needed so that it's not coming out of the town. So, I mean, I also want to acknowledge that, you know, the residents do have concerns, legitimate concerns, but the applicant has also kind of bent over backwards to try to do business in Oxford as well, so I think we need to take that into consideration as well. Excuse me, I have the floor. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Nope, public hearing is closed, I'm sorry.
When do we ever voice though?
Excuse me.
So, I think that-
I mean, this directly affects-
Excuse me, I can ask you to leave if you don't keep quiet. Thank you.
I understand that right now, on the other project, the gravel cost is low. I mean, this is, we've missed another whole season of potential construction because we pushed it out and pushed it out and pushed it out so much, so I, I would like to try to come to some sort of resolution, either yes or no or something, you know, so that we can move forward definitively tonight. I don't know, I mean, I know you had mentioned that perhaps there had been a conversation that you could potentially consider the fifty percent amount. I don't know if that is something reasonable based on current market values or not, because I also, I'm not in the market, I don't know exactly what figures are, that's not my expertise, that's what we have you for. I mean, is forty thousand something that is reasonable? Is thirty something, thirty thousand something that's reasonable? I, I would, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, need some sort of professional input on that, because I have no idea.
Agreed there. No, I think we're on the same page. I was thinking while you're talking, you know, figuring it's fifty percent now, you know, in the time it's going to get- it's fifty percent now, you know, and the time it's gonna get down more so, and then if you add the thirty-five hundred, I, I, my brain was right around thirty-five thousand that I was thinking, if that was too much or.
I think the board should also consider, I know we're reflecting on this as a business, but it's on residential land. The business aspect is them selling aggregate of some sort. The town doesn't get any remuneration or any, um, aspect to that. Even if they rent out all their equipment, we don't get, um, excise on the vehicles that they use, we don't get personal property taxes. So what you get is just the basic cost of taxation on the land. So when you're thinking about reparations for residents in a residential district, and I, I am concerned about, I, I, I feel that if, and this is my opinion as a manager and talking with Jared, initially looking at what residents would have to deal with for as much as five years, if this was going to be an expedited in the timetable also maybe up to the, up to the board, but I would be concerned with, um, only taking care of a certain amount of the road when people might actually change their driving habits to avoid truck traffic in and out, and nine thousand trucks a year, I do believe will degrade the property substantially, and there's nothing else that the town is getting. I know we're referring to them as a business, but, you know, until, you know, somebody, um, buys that house and then you get whatever value is in the house later on, but they get that value too because they sell the house, so. So that's my only concern, usually with a business that's in a business district, we, you know, our assessors go out, they can look at the personal property, they can look at the vehicles coming and going, um, because they're owned by the business. But we don't have that advantage with this, so if the real goal is to be less of a business and to be more of a contractor to get houses in a residential district, then I think the board should consider that as you are trying to weigh, how much should the town eat on improving a roadway that will clearly be impacted? And, and we, you know, people are asking us to repair roads, so, um, this is a unique thing in the sense that it's not on, it's not in a business district where, um, it would get that normal use, um, and would be raised to a priority for being able to do. And that's how our pavement management system works and all of that. So I just throw that out as you're trying to, I think, you know, Jared put in a number, originally we talked a hundred and sixty thousand and then, you know, talking about eighty thousand plus the thirty-five hundred, plus this is also whether you're gonna grant that easement access because that, that means they, they would account for less of the road. But, but I think all of those things, you, you, you have the ability to put whatever the expectations are on this permit as the board, you have the authority to do that. He, Jared has given you some outlines, but I think there are some things that I, I wouldn't navigate too far from because then you may or may not ever get the true cost, and then we wind up actually bearing a lot more cost along with the residents, um, that, that are living in a residential area. So I just wanted to give that as hopefully some helpful information as the board deliberates.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I guess.
So. Yeah, oh, no, okay. Go ahead, Jared.
Sure, um, so I, I guess, in my opinion, based on my analysis, you know, looking at, what can we attribute without doing some crazy study out there, right? We don't, you know, we don't know what the loading, the truck loading will be. You know, we know that it's an old, probably chip sealed road, right, with a, with no engineered sub base, so, um, we really don't know the true extent of the damage until the work is underway, right? But looking at the drop in pavement condition, this analysis in here, i- if we're looking at ten percent additional degradation because of the truck traffic, that's what we're estimating. If you look at, my, my recommendation then would be certainly nothing under ten percent then of that construction cost estimate to start, I mean, as a bare minimum, that's my opinion, you know, based on what we've reviewed in here. Aside from that or beyond that, I think like Jen had sort of said, the town manager matter, manager, excuse me, is that it's, it's a balancing act between the interests of the applicant and then the town's interest is, is how far do we take it? Personally, knowing that fifty percent of the life is already consumed, I'm with the board, I, I think it's totally unreasonable to expect them to front the entire cost. So I think it's somewhere, somewhere in the middle between whether it's half or a minimum of ten percent, the, the number falls in there, quite frankly. These construction cost estimates too, granted are in current dollars, so it doesn't account for inflation, you know, what that cost may be five years from now when they're done, um, i- if that's, if it takes the full permitting duration. So that's something to think about as well, the cost will likely go up. So, just.
Sure. Jump right in.
So, you know, here's, this is my thought, my thoughts going forward is that, um, as far as the bond is concerned, I think the bond should be on the full six acres, I think that's a reasonable request, that's what I think. Um, I think that it should be an additional thirty-five hundred dollars for repairs on the roads, that's my take on it as well. You know, if we're really concerned about increased cost, you know, who would have thought lumber would have gone up as much as it did, you know, I mean, that, that is, that is a reasonable request. You know, as far as the road is concerned, you know, I was really glad to see Jared's computation in here, you know, the road is already fifty percent gone and that has nothing to do with these applicants at all. And yes, there's gonna be a lot of traffic on there as well, but we also have to remember, you know, Oxford Road runs into Charlton to a certain extent, so there's, you know, you know, Charlton's not on the door knocking, you know, looking for money, you know, that type of thing. I mean, as far as the road is concerned, I'm not looking to have them bear this cost, we already have the commitment from, you know, Jared, that the, this road wouldn't be, you know, put on the back burner, you know, or anything along those lines, but, I mean, I wouldn't think more than twenty-four thousand for the road, to be frank with you. And that's, I mean, that's putting them at fifteen, twenty-five, forty, sixty, sixty-two, five, I think, is what that comes in for everything total. That's what I would be looking to do, and we have them on record that they're going to continue to work with us moving forward. That's, that's my thought.
Okay.
Sorry, could I ask a question?
Yeah.
Are you suggesting the twenty-four plus the thirty-five? What the twenty-four inclusive of the thirty-five?
No, twenty-four thousand be contributed towards road repair, thirty-five hundred for the maintenance, and then for the bond, I would do six, I would do the entire six acres, just to be.
At the thirty-five?
At the, at the twenty-five, I think, is what it, for the bond with the twenty-five.
Yeah. Written up as.
Well, I can work for the bond.
Thirty-five.
Okay. Or thirty-five.
Yeah.
You know what, and then, you know what, I think they need to do what they do, they need to get going and see where it goes. That's my take on it.
Any other, yes?
I know we're trying to talk about the road repair and all that stuff, and that's, you know, a major concern for us up here on the board. Again, just going back to some of the concerns, it's a fa, the major concern is the timeframe and the amount of acreage that's being, or cubic yards that's being pulled out of there. All of the houses in that neighborhood are built on the hill, hillside. Whereas this property is trying to get down to road level, um, maybe even some, some stepping. And again, it's, it's the timeframe of the permit and the amount of yardage. And I don't know if we can work with the applicant to adjust the permit at all. He said that he's able to build three houses on the property with pushing some stuff around, uh, pushing some dirt. And that's not what I'm trying to say that you do because the, the nicer the property, the nicer the house that you build there, it's just gonna increase everybody's property values. But I know the major concern of the community in that area is the timeframe of having an open gravel pit potentially upwards of fifteen years along with seventy-five thousand cubic yards, basically refacing the hillside that's there. So I don't know if that's something that we can address, something that we can.
Seems like a lot.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Just a, just a quick comment and at the beginning of this process, even putting in a three house or any house that you put on there, we would be coming to you for an earth removal permit. So that, that was just, just, just the grade to get into the property, to access your frontage. It's five hundred yards, anything beyond five hundred yards is an earth removal permit. And will well exceed that, just cutting a driveway in, into the property. And just, and people have noted that, um, site distances and egress are, are an issue on that, it's a narrow road, but at the end of the day, at the end of the project, are you gonna have more shoulder, you're gonna have better site distance and a wider road vis- visually? That you're not in a, in a tunnel, once this is said and done. Just to, keep in mind.
Let's say the board.
Do we also have to? The applicant had asked us about clarifying a C twenty-three groundwater monitoring and testing. Have wanted clarity on.
Cause it's not sp, it's not spelled out, um, yeah, it, there is no mention in the bylaw or in the regulations of it, so some clarity as to what is expected.
If I may, um, in my opinion, talking with Mika here too, I, I think his mention of one monitoring well at the low point, I think for a site of this size would be sufficient, he mentioned obviously, you know, sites of much greater scale that have a series of monitoring wells and uh, this site's much smaller, but as I mentioned to him too, you have to consider the surroundings here, that this is kind of in a, obviously a more densely populated area, I think, than most earth removal operations. So I think the size of the site, in my opinion, one monitoring well would, would likely be sufficient.
Now, because I'm stupid, uh, when you say a monitoring well, they, they gotta like drill a well that they can take the water out periodically and test it on the site.
Test, they'd be able to, to, to monitor the, you know, static water level in that well to see that whatever they're doing, changing the elevation is also changing the elevation of the groundwater table, that was a concern, I think, of the abutters, that they were gonna have fluctuating levels in their wells because of this, so.
And, and who would be doing the testing, that's another thing to consider, are you trusting us, are you gonna have Jared from T W do that? Those are things to, to clarify in, in that.
In the conditions.
I- in the conditions, yes. If, if that's a condition, to, just to clarify, who's doing what?
In my opinion, I would have the applicant have a third-party.
Right.
Testing agency perform that.
Yeah.
And again, and that's, that's, that's my question, just, just to clarify, who's doing what?
Yep. Personally, I think, I, I see what you're coming from, uh, Selectman LeBlanc, but, um, I, I what happens if the, uh, nevermind, that doesn't, but I, I still like my thirty-five figure, I thought that would be fair, but.
For the road replacement?
Yeah, you know, it's, I just, it's, it's gonna be a side, and you know, again, I'm looking out at the town, what ha, what happens when we get to that point? Town doesn't have the money, you know, um, to, to put in our portion to get it, cause those prices are gonna go up, you know, five years from now, it's not gonna be eighty thousand, I'm sure it's gonna be more than that, so, um, and, and again, I want to be considerate of them also. That's just my feeling, so, yeah, sure.
Can I ask you the same question I asked her?
Yeah.
Is it thirty-five included?
Did that include, yeah.
Including the thirty-five hundred?
Including the thirty-five hundred, cause I had, I had figured somewhere around thirty-two and then there'd be thirty-five, yeah.
Yeah.
So thirty-five total to be inclusive of the increase related.
Right.
What do you think about the bond?
I like your idea of the bond personally because, yeah, because, again, we've had this issue with earth removal in this town before, and we've been left high and dry, you know?
Yeah.
And, uh, it affects the residents, you know, big time, and, um, you know, so.
We're really not off on our numbers, you and I.
Okay.
We're not, what about, um.
Oh, go ahead.
No, no, I don't want, no, I don't want.
This is a, this is.
A free vowing, right? Selectman Daniels, what do you think?
Is it gonna last like two more hours or can we move on?
No, no, we need to finish this up, we need to finish this.
Excuse me.
Finish it up.
All right, so, Selectman Daniels, what do you think about the money?
The, the money, uh, I would agree for the money with the road and the, the bond for the property.
The six acres.
Yeah, the, I'm in agreeance with the thirty-five thousand.
Inclusive of the thirty-five hundred?
In, in, inclusive, yes.
Okay. What about the well?
The well, nee, yeah, that needs to be tested, um, I'd definitely take Jared's recommendation on that, third-party, paid for by the applicant at the.
Low point?
Low point. With the results being sent to the town.
Selectment Torino, what do you think about the money?
I'm good with, I took my notes on that's where the chair wants to go with it.
I'm, I'd love to vote on this tonight.
Move on?
You know, I think, we, you know.
Can I request a five-minute recess? I, I know we're trying to move things along and stuff, but I would just like a five-minute recess.
Sure. I will be glad to give a five-minute recess, we'll come back at your five minutes, so it's eight thirty-five.
Yeah. Okay.
Five-minute recess.
I apologize to everybody.
Thank you. What can you text me?
I think we're close.
Yeah, we're a li, a little bit closer than we think.
Think to get it done.
Question for you, Dennis.
Any questions?
You're gonna acknowledge me or anything?
Chris, we don't get in trouble.
Why a recess, Chris?
I just wanna know when, when he's gonna resign now that he no longer lives in town.
I live in town.
No, you don't.
Seventy-four Webster Road.
No, you don't.
And how do you know that's?
Because I know everything.
Oh, my God.
For God's sakes.
I didn't.
I, I legit do.
I didn't know.
You live in Thompson, Connecticut.
No, I have a, I have a summer home in Thompson.
Oh, okay, oh, okay. You no longer own your home on the Webster Road.
That is one hundred percent correct, right.
So, where, where are you sleeping tonight?
I have done that financially what I do with my, for.
Another Jen Calian, another Jen Calian right there, guys.
Really?
A loophole that he found awesome. Only took her almost three years to move into her house.
I don't know who he is.
You know, sad, just gonna be. Wrong client, and then my, I was all set, and I'm like, oh no, I'm so sorry.
How you doing, Mr. Cummings?
Cause you can hear everything or no? Yeah, really? Jared was saying that.
I'm on shift today, so I've been chugging water to stay hydrated all day in case we have a call. So I was sitting there tapping my toes.
After this?
Yeah, I haven't...
I know, but, but it's...
When the guy here was talking, I heard somebody...
Yeah, I took comp time for tonight.
Yeah, just so you know, that they shouldn't be disruptive to the other people who's sitting in the audience. They shouldn't have to listen to verbal profanity while they're sitting here trying to listen to you or any member.
And then we pause it, it was for deliberation only, so...
Uh, no, this town's more corrupt than the White House.
I'm not sure about that.
You all sat there, buddy?
I am.
Laughing, thinks it's hilarious.
Thank you.
Don't give me that, look. I don't like being told to shut up. If you would've answered my question when I...
All right, okay, Chris.
We need to...
I wouldn't act like this.
We need to...
All right, so we all sat?
Still here?
Sammy, we all sat? Thank you. All right, we're back in order. I would just ask the audience to please keep their comments to themselves. You're disrupting the meeting. And, you know, we would just ask you to, you know, have respect for the applicant that's up here and the board members also. Thank you. All right, so, board members, Selectman Daniels, you all sat?
I am, yes.
Okay, and with that, we have a motion to make.
Well, I would make a motion that we, I gotta find my notes, that we approve the special permit for earth removal for applicant SNK Development LLC, 19 Oxcaloosa Road, with the listed special conditions outlined by the DPW Director, Jared Duval, with the clarification that the bond be for the entire six acres and that there be an additional contribution of $35,000 for the roadway reconstruction and maintenance and that there be one monitoring well at the low point of the property to be reported upon to the town by the applicant during the progress, during the project, with the applicant being responsible for the third-party report. Excuse me? I thought before...
Excuse me, excuse me, ma'am, excuse me. Okay, all right, I'm sorry. I'm gonna ask you to leave, ma'am, if you don't stop it. Thank you. I...
I can second that.
You can second that?
I can.
I'm kinda lost on, because...
Want to repeat it, ma'am?
Well, I...
Did you get all of that?
Can I address the 35,000? If I address that comment?
Yes, go ahead.
With all due respect, ma'am, we have had two separate sessions prior to this meeting that were posted, that the public were able to comment. At our last continuation, it was determined that the public portion was being closed and that we were only contributing, continuing for the discussion and deliberation of the board with the applicant. You were notified, I believe we have the responses back, that the abutters were notified. The public hearing notices were posted, so with all due respect, I apologize that you may have missed it, but the public comment was allowed, not once, but twice in the past. So with all due respect, we would like to continue to do our job so that we can continue on tonight. Then why did you say, take a five-minute break and then we could speak?
No, we did not say that, but...
All right, five minutes.
Okay, ma'am, it's all done, please, okay? Thank you.
So Dee, do you need me to clarify my motion?
Yes.
Would you just...
Yes.
After the 35,000?
So it would be a bond for the full six acres?
At how much?
At...
3,500.
She's gonna modify that now, because there's a motion. There's no second, okay, yeah, go ahead, sorry, sorry, sorry.
So, in the paperwork, we have 3,500, but I don't know that...
The bylaws and the earth removal package that we received, they're all states $2,500. So you may have had, like Jared mentioned, the previous earth removal that had a condition that they upped the required bond. I'm just going about what...
The bylaw says?
What the bylaw says, that's what I'm going with.
That's right, this, these conditions were adapted from a previous, the most recent earth removal permit in which that was increased, so...
So my motion then will be for the 2,500, for the full six acres, as stated in the bylaws, with an additional 35,000 for the road reconstruction and maintenance and one monitoring well at the low point of the property to be completed by the applicant at their cost by a third-party and submitted to the town.
Selectment, are you, are you putting, are you also referencing the memo that...
Sorry, I thought she got the point. You got the part where I said that it was based on the special conditions memo, correct?
The memo.
Okay, yes. So based on the special conditions memo and those are just points of clarity to that memo.
Got it. Second?
We have a motion and a second. That's how I took it, Cheryl, is that she was picking up from that point, so... She had said that right from, she said those conditions right at the beginning and then... So that, that's clear to me, so, any other comments or questions by the board? And I will call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
And I will vote no. So that's two noes, two yeses, the permit is not granted. All right, so next item on our agenda is to go to the Batlet Pond Dam Project with Mr. Kravoski.
Mr. Chairman, just to lead up to Mr. Kravoski, as you know, I've spoken to the board about this particular initiative that is coming in your way on two occasions, one in which I had gone over and shared some photographs with the board and had expressed that Mr. Kravoski wanted to come and have a discussion with the board because it would be something that is very unusual. It's not repairing a dam, it's removing an impoundment. So, Mr. Kravoski, welcome, I'm glad to see you here today, and I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan, if you can hear me, thank... As Ms. Callahan had, Glenn Kravoski again, from EBT Environmental Consultants, I live on the French River, Oxford resident my whole life. As Ms. Callahan had pointed out to me, which I was not privy to this one piece of information, that DCR, Department of Environmental Conservation, out of Boston, the Division of Fish and Wildlife, had completed 13 dam removal site reconnaissance studies in 2019 in Oxford, happened to be one of those out of the full Commonwealth. In fact, on the photos of their brochure, Oxford, this dam is the first photo in their assessment. So, and they chose these dams, sites were selected for their combined public safety and ecological benefit. The study on the Oxford Dam in 19 with the Fluvio Geomorphologists, it was a $20,000 that Division of Ecological Restoration or the state had paid to have Interfluv, a company out of Cambridge, which studies dams across the country on removal. And again, because of their public safety and ecological benefit. Just briefly, we might want to say, much briefer than the previous meeting, we've been looking at, I've been looking at the French River and studying it now since '79. But let me just say that since 1955, there has been approximately six dams during that 55 flood that blew out in Oxford. And the one on Batlet Pond Dam, that one on Clarabotten Road, is only one of two that lasted through the flood. All the rest of them, Crinsman's Mill Dam, North Oxford Mill Dam, the one on 56 and 12, if you're familiar, the Fair Pond Dam, these are all that had not withstood the flood. And Cumminsville Road, there's still a small dam up there. We've worked with our DCR on that, and now that dam, the only thing that's left of that, the four sluiceways are fully open, and now there's passage up and down, and that's why there's no more impoundment on Cummins Road, where Sidney Lonstein's mill used to be. I own one of the old dams, the Clarabotten's Dams, and that dam blew out also under 55 flood. This one dam is an impediment to upstream and downstream movement of, in my case, it would be for Eastern Brook Trout and other trout fisheries to benefit the town. This North Oxford is now, and we, I work to get this stock, the North Oxford portion of the French River's stock with Rainbow Trout, at Route 56 from, and so now from Rochdale Pond Dam down to Fair Pond Village, that pooling area. We have a trout fishery, and trout are now occupying the rest of the river. I know that's not your major concern, but the, this ecological benefit of creating a cold river system is what happens when you remove these shallow dams. We understand that the dam is aesthetically pleasing. It wasn't before 19, I went in for the owner, and we removed all the trees, which had never been removed, or at least hadn't in the last 50 or 60 years, on the east side of the dam off of North Water Drive. We removed those trees with Advantage Tree Service, and then on the east side, we used Lemiansky and removed those. And now that the trees, excuse me, on the west side of the dam are now removed, people now can see this, the pond and its waterfall, and it is something that is of concern of the public. We will go eventually in front of the Conservation Commission with a notice of intent. There'll be public hearings, we'll actually have meetings, and we'll set them up before that to discuss this with the public, because there are a few people, there might be more than a few, but there actually are people on North Water Drive that are concerned with any kind of dam removal. But we have also offered this dam to the people for, for free if they want to pay the $600,000 that it takes to either repair or remove this dam. DCR is requiring dam owners to either repair or remove their dams, and there's no public benefit, there's no benefit to the owners. This dam had been offered to the town in the early 80s when I was on the Conservation Commission, a couple of times in 70s and then in the 80s. And the town doesn't want the dam because it's a liability, it's a cost to repair. There's a cost every five years for someone like Leonard Engineering out of Midstate Office Park to do a dam study and seeing what the problems are to the dam. The present dam showing up there has been losing capstones. Since I was a kid, I've got a scar, it still shows here, that I actually got around eight years old, slipping on rocks below that, but over the years, that we keep losing, whether it's every couple of years, more capstones, which is where the breach is. And the pond is now approximately three feet shallower than the original concrete spillway, which is on the western side of the dam. In that photo is also a low-level outlet, which is on the eastern side of the dam. It's a little enclave after that green strip on the left, and then you get an open spot before you get to the waterfall. That's the old low-level outlet. That also is rotted, it's a riveted, steel riveted pipe, so those kind of things would have to be repaired. And so, again, my clients are amenable to giving the pond away to any neighbors that want it, and then they can take on this liability. Otherwise, we're gonna, we have applied for a grant. We approached American Rivers, and they didn't have the time for it, which is another dam removal company that did the $1.25 million work, some of the work over on Hammett Brook in Sturbridge, where two dams were removed and approved by the Town Conservation Commission. That money came out of Millennial Power Plant. When that was built, because of the hot water coming out of the plant, it was going to affect the Quinabog River, so through requirements of EPA, there was money put aside, and eventually that money was used to benefit the Quinabog River, and that's how that money came to the dam to be removed, those two dams, which then increased trout fishery habitat and also wood turtle habitat, a rare species. This dam will also improve wood turtle habitat, which is a rare species, which I just happen to have, just hatched out at the end of August 20 off my property, which makes 131 now that I've hatched out through a rare species collection permit that I have to screen and protect that species and create the nesting habitat, more than you might want to know, but that, that's another species that will benefit by this access. The dam itself increases, increases water temperature. Last year, we had as high as 85 degrees coming off the top. Eastern Brook Trout upper lethal temperature is 72, and it also decreases water quality because of the decay inside the impoundment. Beyond that, the impoundment itself, some of that green vegetation you see in that pond is invasive water chestnut. So if you go to Greenville Pond in Leicester, you will see that the entire pond surface is covered with this invasive plant. That's what's happening in this impoundment. Our design for 600,000 would take out and originally, would reestablish the original channel built on, if we're facing the, the direction we're facing, it's on the left-hand side of the dam, and we would salvage the organic material. There's a stockpile area all the way to the left and in the back that's designed in the Fluvio Geomorphologist Interfluv Study. So, and, and, and it improves the water quality of this river that myself and conservations and border health have been working on, and myself since '79. And just to say what other problems that the river had, as we grew up, if you were from Oxford, you called it the polluted river or the dirty river. Or, and when I was a kid in the 50s, late 50s, I was born in 54, where I live, you could still see the old impoundment because it blew out in 55, and it was three feet of suds that could blow up in the air, be lifted by the air, and you would see it floating up in the air. And so eventually, over time, we've stopped, and I'm gonna give you what we've stopped for sewage to go in that river and how it's then increased, and I'm nearly gonna wrap it up. One thing that happened back in, back in 85 or so, 84, 85, when I was still on the conservation, I discovered the sewage coming out of the Oxford Rochdale Sewer Treatment Plant, which had a capacity of 184,000 gallons a day, and it was flowing 320, upwards of 300 to 320 a day, so that sludge would be flushed out in the spring into the river, which was another reason that that river stayed polluted. What eventually happened, we tracked it down, the Conservation Commission brought Mr. Wilson, who happened to be in the news this week out of Leicester, over some other issues. I still like him as a guy because he has taken that plant and turned it into a higher water quality. We're getting into the water quality of the French. So the water quality of the French River has been improved by taking out sewage, taking off, out of Oxford Drive-In, whether it's Dorne Eames, the ABC Bus Line, Chestnut Street, North End Pub, Homestead Restaurant, which is now Oxford Market, the Crinsman Mill, in front of it, there's a house that was stopped in Wofford Flag. These are all septics that went into the French River, that we've pursued over the last 25 to 30 years to get out. So now we have a higher water quality river with note, with an advanced sewer treatment plant in North Oxford, now called the Oxford Rochdale Sewer Treatment Plant. It's a half a million gallons a day plant at advanced treatment instead of secondary, which was before. All this has improved this water quality of the French River that now is used and kayaked and fished. And this dam removal will go towards the fire, the ultimate improvement of the French River, allowing for shading, decrease in water temperature, increase in water quality, all the things that you might have received, I asked Ms. Callahan's Dee to send on to you, which is what effects that have, small dams have large effects on water quality, which is what this would be. And so, and the removal, I'm not asking for your, any money out of the town, we're not doing that. We, one of the conservations during a sit-in meeting that we had with them, there became a question about, well, what do you, what is the owner gonna do with the land after they remove it? Let me be upfront, because it wasn't apparently in the, the application that we had written. We do plan on selling off a couple of lots, which would be on the left back, because that will help us finance the removal of the dam. If there's two lots in there in that gravel, old gravel pit area, right across from the entrance to the mill on Clarabotten Road, there is upland land that's outside the 200-foot riverfront area that we already had a study done with my, with engineers about four years ago. And we're gonna reactivate that, in fact, we've talked to engineers in town to come up with a couple of lots so that we don't have to ask the state through grants, which they've already saw this as a high potential for improving, again. A hazardous waste dam, a hazardous, a high hazard dam in your town, which you're not putting any money towards, that... putting any money towards, that question about high hazard, we will, as we remove it, and, and, and instead of six hundred thousand if we don't get the grant, although in July, the DER did come out to Oxford and show their interest after we put the application in in April. So we might still get the grant from DER. But we want to throw in money too if we don't, and improve our application for next year, because that's what you do with these applications, whatever your deficiencies might be, which we don't see many, we can increase. But one of the things we can do is sell off a couple of lots that would be nearer Clarebothen Road. One would be off of North Water Drive, and one would be off of Clarebothen, so we can finance this. It is important for us to have a municipal, the municipal people to understand this. We are in touch with the Last Green Valley, the Quinabog Shitucket Heritage Corridor also, because this also improves water quality. And lastly, what the benefit might be to the town, because my proposal is, and through my clients, is to create a walking trail around this, this, this river. There's Vernal Pools there, there's an old crossing at the very red line at the top, that smaller map, that's an old road crossing that could cross the river. We follow the old railroad tracks on the left-hand side, cross the river, come back, and actually have a, a crossing over what's left of the dam, and also go below the dam, down to Clarebothen Road, go by Vernal Pools, and this could be a parkland or conservation restriction for the town, that we would potentially hold the property still if, if nobody wants to take the property from us, and create parkland along the river, along this, one of the top quality, you don't, we don't have very, this is, I'm wrapping it up, I know I talk about a bit, but to have a trout river in Oxford on a major river, this is called a major river, the French River, to you people it might not be, but it, it's listed as, it's one of our smallest major rivers in the town, in the, in the state. And again, to have a cold water fishery both in North Oxford and in South Oxford in the, in the, in the joining of those rivers by the removal of this dam would, would be a goal that I've had for years. And what, and again, it could be an asset for parkland for the town. And, and so for those reasons, we would like, well, at least you're due to hear and be open to whatever you hear in the future about it, and we'll be back in front of the commission again, and we will be talking to the neighbors, because obviously, they, what they're seeing now, the far end of that dam, that whole green space along that, the right-hand side of the stone, that was exotic invasive plants, that was Amer, that was multi-floral rose and oriental bittersweet and American elm. You could never see the pond, well, for the last thirty or forty years, you couldn't see the pond, because it was just shaded, or that viewpoint was ta, was taken away by that invasive plants. The, the DCR requires that no trees be on a dam, on the dam or within ten feet of the dam. So to satisfy DCR and keep it in good grace with them, that's why we removed the trees. Did it make it aesthetically pleasing for the people that drive Clarebothen Road, along with taking all the beer cans and beer bottles and beer boxes and everything we did to improve that, that point, which was a disaster, because I rode up and up and down to Miller's, not Miller, but Billy Millet's house to do my chainsaw sharpening and things. So now, yes, it is aesthetically pleasing, but it is not a natural habitat, and it is a habitat slowly decreasing as it fills in with organic material. And, and that is another reason why we're looking to remove this Clarebothen, again, Clarebothen, actually, it's in Daniel's History of Oxford, it talks about her sitting on that dam. But, but it is something that we would like, like to do, we will do, to improve water quality in Oxford, water quality in the French, connect Eastern Brook Trout Fisheries, improve wood turtle habitat, create bedload, which is now trapped in there, which is another issue with, with rivers and having no bedload, because it's trapped in the empowerment, so you don't have it moving downstream if you follow bedload and turtle nesting habitat, which I do. Okay. I appreciate your time. I'll take any questions if you have any for me, and thank you again for listening.
Well, thank you very much, Glenn. We appreciate what you do, and I'm sure, I wish you luck with the, with your grant application, because it'd be nice to get that, like you said, taken out of there, and that would improve the water flow, so.
And for the people, let me say that also, because I'm always, to me, I die, you know, one day. To me, this is for the people and for the environment, and we will, we do want to give something back, and that, for me, I took on the French River in seventy-nine to clean it up in my lifetime, and that's a written and stated goal I took on then, and this is just one more point of it.
Yep. Great.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, if there's no question. Thank you again. We'll, we'll, you'll be hearing more from us. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, all of you. Amen.
All right. Next item on our agenda is setting the date for a special election. I'm going to ask town clerk to come up here to help us through this, because this is a process that she could probably help us with. I think everybody's gotten that information beforehand, so I think she has a recommendation for us, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Michelle Jenkins, town clerk. As I gave in your packets, I gave you some timelines, so you would get more familiar with, you know, the dates and what it entails in my office as far as having papers available, when they're due, when I, you know, because there's specific Mass General laws. So I gave you two guidelines, two calendars for you to choose from.
So board members, we have, she's, she's given us one scenario where we could have the actual election date of November sixteenth, or her preferred one, I, from what I understand, is December seventh. Cut down on the amount of work on, there's only two clerks with town meeting and other things going on, so I'll leave it up to the board. Anything?
Personally, I think that the town deserves to have a full board based on what our partner calls for, so I would recommend that you go with the earlier date, because we've been operating for so long with a four to four, and I, I personally think it would be better if you did it sooner rather than later.
The only reason I said December is, is I've heard, because they have so much going on.
We do with town meeting and AG submissions. I have a specific strict guideline to get AG submissions submitted, the availability of election workers, and it, and it would actually give more time for candidates, possible candidates, to collect signatures, and I'm not sure if you saw, my, my recommendation was if you could possibly keep it to a Tuesday, because people get very upset if you switch to a Wednesday or a Thursday. I understand, you know, the first possible date could be November tenth, but I'm requesting to have it at least pushed till a Tuesday, if that's your choice.
Mr. Chairman, I'm of the main, the, excuse me, the same mindset. I think the sooner the better. I know there was a town meeting. I mean, we, I just think it, I agree, I think it's just sooner rather than later and get it done, and get it done before the holidays get really socked to us, so to speak, so, because then we'll have even more difficult time. People will be traveling, we'll just, for holidays. I think the, I like the sixteenth of November, but I agree with you, I can't imagine doing it on any other day other than a Tuesday.
It's, I've done it in the past, and it's, causes a lot of.
It would be a lot of chaos.
Yes.
I think, I agree. Thank you.
I would have to go with the recommendation of the town clerk. I mean, she's very busy, she's the one that actually does all the work. We just sit here and choose a date. We have it very easy. Town meeting coming up, like you said, the holidays are coming up too, which, you know, whichever date we choose, it's, it's going to cause issues with, you know, just having an expedited election, and I really like the idea. It, it sounds like we're going to have a really good turnout for potential candidates this year. I've seen and heard of a lot of people that are interested in filling that position, so I think to offer them the maximum amount of time to collect their signatures, we should go with the later date. And if holidays are a concern, then we can always consider after the holidays as well, when people are back from vacation and the hustle-bustle is down. I, I agree, we need to fill the position, having only four is very difficult with special permits and odds and ends, so, but I also think we owe it to the town, if they're going to be spending money on it, to do it appropriately and not rush it.
With all due respect, I don't think it would be rushing it. I mean, we've been a four to four for quite some time now, and it's clearly doing the town no justice. I think that we owe it to the people that elect us to have a full board. I mean, you just said that you've heard of many people who are interested, so doing it earlier shouldn't really affect them if they're already aware that the position is there, and they're already aware that they're interested in running for the position. Having it before Thanksgiving as opposed to between Thanksgiving and Christmas might be better for them for obtaining signatures, to get it out of the way before the holiday.
I still think December. I mean, I'm, again, I'm looking at the workload we're, we're placing on the clerk. Two people in that office.
What happened to the third?
What happened to the third?
I thought there were three people in there.
Now there's only two.
And also another thing, that all of these nomination papers, they would need to be certified, you know, that's another thing to consider. And then, because I have to get the ballot to the printer, and it has to, I have to have absentee ballots in my office twenty-one days prior to the availability. So that's also another, you know, tremendous strain on the office as far as in doing the town meeting and getting all of the information to the AG's office again.
Before we make a motion, I mean, it's obvious what, where we stand, so unless somebody wants to budge, I don't know what to say or do. We need to decide on a date to have an election, and.
Michelle, I'm sorry about your budget, too. I know you weren't planning, it does look like you were planning on this.
No.
And Mr. Chairman, about that part of it, I was going to say, I didn't want to affect the deliberation here, is that I can work to try to make this happen, I think it's important to happen, but again, I want to make sure that the recommendation from the clerk for the timetable, that works best for the clerk's office, so that we can have, you know, a robust fair and, and full election. The monetary part, we can work on trying to find that, it's cost about between thirteen and fifteen thousand by Michelle's estimates, so that will be on top of the spring election that she had budgeted. So I do think that is important, and obviously I will work to make sure that we can have the election and figure out ways financially to make that happen, just like anything else. But I do think that the way that the election should be, we typically do listen to the clerk's recommendations for that, but, you know, again, the board can make that determination.
I respect the clerk's recommendation, but it's also not the town's fault that we're suddenly shorted out in the clerk's office. This isn't an election that came by surprise. We've known it was coming for a long time. We could have planned for, budgeted for, posted it sooner, further away from the town meeting, and I, I understand that it puts a lot of work on people, and I apologize for that. I know in the past, we've had people come into the clerk's office to assist. I know we've called, you know, we've had other departments, people out of retirement to assist, so I just, I'm thinking about people that we're elected by, so I still think that, you know, no disrespect to you and the work that your office has to do, but, you know, I try to be for the chair, for the, for the people and say that, I, no disrespect to you as chair, but I think that it's important to fill the seat, because clearly we are getting nowhere as a board, and we're not doing any, any justice to the people that elected us by what we're doing.
Mr. Chairman.
I don't know how you say we're getting nowhere. I think we're operating the best we can under the circumstances, and, and eventually we'll, we'll have a fifth member, yes, you know, but in the meantime, we're getting things done, we're operating, and it's unfortunate that we're in this position. You are correct in that.
Mr. Chairman, I also, I mean, in, in defense of the clerk's office, perhaps the election might have been scheduled even earlier, but the, the board actually did not have a quorum in the previous month to be able to perhaps even have brought up this. So I, I think timing is everything, and I.
It wasn't on the agenda.
No, I'm saying that.
We're not allowed to bring up things that are on the agenda, so it could have been wrong.
All right, never mind, never mind. I, I, I think the board is doing, you know, it's, the work that it has to do, and I already said that I'm committed to making sure that you get the election. I just would like to give some deference to the recommendation from the town clerk, and that's all. That's what my job is as town manager.
Again, do you want to continue with this, or some sort of resolution?
Are you, I mean, are you, you're not going to budge? You're not going to budge? We're not going, I'm not going to budge. I can't speak for Selectmen Triono, but, you know, I think it's a shame, and I think this is a, a very telling issue, and I do agree with you, we are able to get some of this business done. I'm not going to, I, I do agree with you, but, you know, when it comes down to certain votes, there is a distinct division, and I, and this is why the charter calls for five people on the board. It's not an even-numbered board for a reason, and, you know, it's a tragedy as to, you know, as, you know, why we're in this position that we are, certainly not anything that anyone asked for, but I can't also disagree with the fact that we've known this is coming, and I don't understand why there isn't an urgency on some of the board members to get this done as soon as possible. And I apologize, Michelle, that's not my, it's not a.
No, I completely understand.
It's not a projection at all, you know, so, I mean, I underst, I hear what people are saying, I respectfully disagree, so, you know, I guess the only thing to do is to move it to the next meeting's agenda, whenever our board of selectmen meeting is. I think it's intuitive.
I mean.
And then that puts us into the same position, then now we're really into the holidays, right?
So why not give what everybody wants, and people want an election as soon as possible, and we have staff members that are working very diligently to make sure that our town meeting happens, make sure everything on the political calendar happens throughout the year, so appease both ends of the court and choose the later date.
Very nice, Mike.
We're, we're giving the people what they want in a spec, special election, as you put it. We're doing it as soon as possible to accommodate.
But that's not as soon as possible.
If she gave us a date, if she couldn't do it this date, she wouldn't have provided this date as an option. We would have only seen the December seventh date.
Well, I wanted to also give you as the selectmen, as the, the board that decides the date, the earliest convenient date. I mean, I, that's, you know, but I am, I was respectfully requesting it to be on the sixth, because it, I can't have specific people coming into my office, working on, you know, my state systems. I can't just bring in, you know, seniors to help out and things like that. It can only be specific people. So it, it just can't be like, like the town manager can't just come into my office and start working on my, on my systems.
Got it. I'd make a motion to have the special election set for Tuesday, November 16th, 2021.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second to have the special election on 16th. Any other questions or comments?
I do have one question.
Yes.
If we vote for November 16th, is that something, are you gonna have to work absurd hours throughout the day to get that done, or...
Yes, that, that we will, my assistant clerk, Tom Sullivan, will be working more hours.
Okay.
We definitely will, because we have to certify all the nomination papers, and then we'll be dealing with town meeting, and we'll have to be getting workers for town meeting and the election, it's gonna double everything.
Is it something you'd prefer to do?
Tom, absolutely. He's 100% already...
Is he overtime budgeted?
Already trained, and has done numerous parts of the job.
Okay. All right, call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, that's for an affirmative, we'll make the Tuesday, the 16th, as a special election. Thank you, Michelle, for coming.
Thank you.
All right, next item on our agenda is the Council of Council appointment, town manager, who do we have, Nicole Mazzella, is she here today, Brian?
I don't think so.
No.
I don't think so, no.
All right.
But this is a, and another additional person, we've been making sure that we send out requests for people to participate, and I think there's been a lot more on the common in downtown that people are getting excited about, whether it's been movies on Main or the concerts, and, and now we have a number of people that want to participate on the committee, so Nicole would be a welcome addition.
All right, entertain a motion or approve.
I would make a motion that the board appoint Nicole Mazzella, a 26 Monument Drive Oxford Mask to the Council of Council. Second.
Any comments? Call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, for an affirmative, thank you very much, Nicole. That motion passes. All right, next thing is preservation restriction for the Oxford Free Public Library.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in your packets, you're going to see an actual document that is draft. As you know, we had applied for a Mass Historic Commission, my office did, there was an awful lot that went into that application, we turned around, we were successful with the grant to not only rehabilitate all the doors and the windows at the library, but also we had an unexpected failing of the underlying structure of the brick facade. All of the work has been completed, and back in our May town meeting of 2019, there was approval for the board to exercise or go into a preservation restriction, which is one of the conditions of the Mass Historic Commission grant. And so we're at the final phases, everything has been completed, the architect that oversaw the job had put in its final report, and we just want to collect our money that, that is the final phases for reimbursement, and so this would be for the, the actual exercising of the preservation restriction by the chairman and the vice chairman.
All right, entertain a motion.
Yes, and I would make a motion that the Mark Chairman and Megan Triano Vice Chair of the Oxford Board of Selectmen are offered to execute preservation restriction with Massachusetts Historical Council for the Oxford Free Public Library.
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments? Call for a vote?
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, that's for an affirmative, thank you very much, that motion passes. And we get to the town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First up, I just wanted to inform the board, it's with great pleasure that I announced several recent appointments from within, and also one external, first, David Adams, actually, I will ask David Adams, Tom Sullivan, and Jennifer Warren Diamond just to, to come forward, so people can have some familiarity with their face. Dave Adams is Oxford's newest Veterans Agent, Dave will be holding office hours Tuesdays and Thursdays, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the Senior Center, is available for appointment outside these times. Dave was a sergeant major in the Marines and is the commander of the VFW Post 6055 in Southbridge, and he's president of the Southbridge Veterans Council, and a member of the Southbridge Town Council, which I'm sure he was familiar with some of the deliberation time activity this evening. We welcome you, Dave, I didn't know if you wanted to say hello and welcome aboard.
Thank you, Madam Town Manager. First of all, my condolences to you guys, for the loss of your selectmen, I'm sure it was pretty tough and to the families. That being said, I just want to say thank you for everything, staff has been remarkable, professional, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
And second, please come over here, don't be off camera there, Tom Sullivan, many familiar faces, he's been appointed recently as Assistant Count Clerk, and has been working in the clerk's office for a number of years, and through both, I think, sound deliberation and showing and demonstrating his competency in the clerk's office, we welcome his Assistant Town Clerk, and continues with his dedication to the town of Oxford, welcome, Tom. Didn't know if you want to say hello at all. He'll be working diligently for the election.
He's a man of little words.
Little words, yeah, but, but, but great talent. And also, we have Jennifer Warren Diamond Esquire, who's been appointed as the Assistant Town Manager, obviously you're very familiar with her, and like other recent appointments, both Laura Wilson, who's in the back, who I know she's here to support the people who are here, because she's working with our Veterans Agent, worked with Jennifer, and then also worked with Tom, you know, similar to those recent promotions like Laura Wilson and Shelley Lambert in the Community Sec, Community Center, both Tom and Jennifer have really demonstrated the necessary performance and leadership skills to be promoted to these positions, and I do believe they'll be great assets to the continued work that we do here as an organizational team. And Jennifer, I didn't know if you wanted to say anything, or you want to be short on words like Tom.
Sure, thank you, I've enjoyed working with the board for the past few years, and have learned so much about this community, I'm really excited to proceed forward.
Thank you.
Right.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, congratulations. The next item is economic development update, I wanted to have the board understand that we are doing an awful lot in the area for economic development and the promotion of businesses. On August 11th, the East Coast Metal Roofing had their grand opening and ribbon cutting at their Sutton Ave location, a number of our staff actually attended the event, and it was well-attended by local officials, as well as state officials, and we wish that company continued success. Also, Luxa LLC of Worcester is a pharmaceutical pack, repackaging company, and they have purchased Seven Pioneer Drive recently, and they are going to be working to retrofit and prepare to open that site in the very near future, and we welcome them as well. The owner of 275 Main Street, the David Nathaniel Taft House, which had been up for sale for quite some time, was recently purchased, and they're looking to open none other than the cinnamon wagon bed and breakfast in that location. They've talked about the revitalization of downtown and the tourism that they believe is very well warranted in this area, and of course, our Director of Planning and Economic Development, Tony Sousa, who's so quiet in the background, has been actively working with that current business owners and those interested in finding space in Oxford, and assisting them in navigating and licensing processes that, that are there. I also wanted to let the board know that the planning board on August 23rd had approved BVO's cannabis cultivation application with an odor control provision, which I put in your packets, so you can see that. So thank you, Tony, for continued work, and he actually has some more, but it was actually more recent than when I filed the draft manager's report, so we have some very exciting news, I think, to share in the next manager's report with you. Loews Pond Dam, I know I brought this up a number of times, we did have an actual meeting on August 24th, and I had a number of staff meet with the Mass DEP and also AECom, and they have, it basically informed us that the Chapter 91 licenser for the actual project in 401 license or certification process, water certification process, is starting, and that means that they're going to complete the project in the next, I want to call it, construction cycle, but there are a lot of steps to the remain, and I thought it was important to try to put together a community meeting. I've had a couple residents, they saw the article from our last meeting here, and I know they're interested in learning more. I, I hope in your packets that Jennifer had brought up, I had been asking the DCR folks in AECom if it was at all possible, if they were going to assume this project, could we also bring some new vitality to that location, and they had offered to try to think about doing a conceptual drawing, and, and I put in your packets, I don't know if it came out, mine didn't come out on this one here, this is like a zoomed in, zoomed in one, but it basically, they're putting a whole, their concept here anyway, initially, is to put a whole walkway across the new dam, they're talking about creating a whole new 75-foot dam and removing the old foundation of the former mill and also the sluice way, which is extremely, extremely precarious. So they were thinking of, you know, actually putting grounds and parking on either side, and to have this as a designated spot, and I think that would be terrific. And, you know, I did say that I wanted them to come before the board, but I wanted to alert the board that I plan to have a community meeting towards the end of September, and then try to get these guys in to show you this rendering, can, oh, there, no, no, yours is zoomed in too, so that doesn't help you, just like, it doesn't show you the whole thing. Sorry about that. But there will be plenty of time to show the conceptual onward. Again, this is gonna be terrific for the town if we can continue to be the first in the state to actually have this done in partnership with the Commonwealth, and being more than a $2 million project, I think it will be pretty impressive if we can work with them. The next one is just to let you know again, Roselli, Clark, and Associates will be back for their continued financial audit the first week in November, and they will hopefully complete it then, they came earlier this summer, and we're looking forward to another positive audit. The next item is just to make the board aware that Jared, who was here earlier, has informed both myself and now informing you as well, that the shared streets and spaces grants, both the 300,000 and the additional 100,000 project had begun in, actually, today, September 7th. The project will continue to aim to improve the pedestrian safety across our main street on a number of what we consider to be dangerous crossing areas, including the front street to Fairlawn Ave. So postcards were mailed, put those in, so you could see that our DPW director has basically provided the public with notice, and also that has put on our Facebook page for the DPW. Another thing that Jared wanted for us to bring to your attention is, we've had this, a number of very heavy rains recently, and we've had two culvert failures in Oxford, the Industrial Park West and Prospect Street. For any one of these, it can be expensive, and there's a lot of culvert attempts to get culvert money from the state, it's very difficult, and what they are looking at is a potential 50 to $60,000 repair, which even though it came through a flooding activity, it wasn't designated as an emergency storm, and so therefore MEMA and FEMA won't be paying for it. So the Prospect, Prospect culvert will be roughly about a $10,000 to repair, and what we need to be able to do is look at how these unforeseen culvert failures really impact the DPW's operating budget, so I've got to work with him to try to figure out, you know, early in the fiscal year, how we're gonna work with this. Right now, the, the roads are barricaded with concrete jerseys in place to protect the public, especially for the industrial west culvert. But I know that Tony's still here, it's just highlighting how important it is to get this MVP, the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant program going, and we, I have already informed the board that we are receiving money for the initial, what we consider to be the, the assessment portion of that, and hopefully if we come up with the plan, we can get money in the future to help us address these kinds of things. So I want to, my hat goes off to both Tony and Jared for leading us in that, but this was, they just got through telling you that we've got the money, and then we had these culvert failures, it's like, not what you want to be able to have happen, but it just highlights the need for what they're doing. The next one is just to let you know, the Oxford Community Center feasibility study has begun its initial processes with the actual firm, Berry &amp; Dunn, they're in the process of, of working what we consider to be the data collection and site visit stage. They met with professional staff, we had a whole grouping, and they not only toured the facility, but active, asked very pointed kinds of questions, and, and you can see in your packets, I provided you with information that, things that they're actually looking for, so our, the OCC director will be responsible for providing a lot of that, and eventually we're gonna have the broader team meet with them, but we wanted to provide them with the data that looks at the programming and the overall future desires of programming, and then they will also, are in the midst of trying to gain access to, you know how old that school building is, the original plans, I don't know, Tony, if you were able to find them yet, but we need actual construction site plans for the school as well, to see what may be possible from an architectural standpoint. But I, I will have more to share with the board in the near future about that. I also put in another email about the Sandalwood Nursing Home, which has been a vacant building right across from the DPW headquarters, it is the former nursing home, it just went up for public auction, and on August 23rd and 25th, and it sold for over 440,000, it's a 20,000 acre square foot parcel, and it is located in an R3 residential district, and the listing had over 500,000 views, so there was an active, you know, engagement there. We're hoping that Tony can look to work with the future owner of the site, we don't know who that is, because it was an online auction, but hopefully it'll be some kind of business that we would really like to see here in town, and/or they have intentions to make improvements to the, to the property. The next item is just to let the board know that the COVID-19 has been showing its ugly head again. One of the things that we've had to wrestle with, aside from getting a lot of reports about how the school districts will have masks being mandated through the state, the Delta variant has already been showing its head here in town, we have a number of breakthrough cases that have happened, as well as individuals who are actually coming down with COVID. In the beginning of July, we had zero cases, and as you can see from the graph that we provided from our public health nurse, who's asked us to once again emphasize for people to be very vigilant, you know, we had a peak at the end of August of more than 28 cases, and I did have discussions with our public health nurse over the weekend for concerns of employee cases, and so what I need to continue to remind people of in our employment realm is to take very good care and caution of not just themselves, but also the employees that surround them, and we are working with developing and reinforcing that message. I'm hopeful that, you know, we don't get, you know, a real surge that we had prior to this, but I just want to make sure that we continue to provide that update, because it has been very difficult for our public health nurses more recently, and they're concerned about making sure they can get that message out to the public. The next item is just, it's, it's a, it's a little bit dated, because we didn't have that one meeting, but I think everyone remembers that there was a police officer who attempted a rescue in the city of Worcester, died during that time period, and our police chief, you know, believes in learning from tragedies and also setting examples to the staff that we always have the ability to make improvements in the work that we do, and so the Oxford Police Department, after that terrible tragedy, had bought water safety equipment and actually outfitted the patrol cars with not only a throwing rope bag, but also personal flotation device, and went through some training and exercises on how to approach somebody who may be a drowning victim and not become a victim themselves. So my hat goes off to our police chief, and also really Sergeant Cornet, who came up with this idea, and hopefully we can honor Officer Manny Familia, who, who died, and make sure it never happens to any one of our officers or first responders. Onto a positive thing as well, for the police department, Zach, our first canine dog here has arrived for duty after his training, and he is ready to respond for first tour, and he started August 20th. I provide... I provided you with some photographs of his trainer and I think you can see they, they all look really good. I know I don't have it up there now, but they have, they've gone through a lot of training together and I think that they will be a tremendous asset to the force. The next item is just to let you know that Dale Mahoda has resigned from the Planning Board recently due to personal health reasons. I just want to thank Dale for his many years of service and know that he will be very much missed and the Planning Board is, is going to be looking for another member. The other item was, we had that horrible, horrible heat wave and also lots of rain. So Carbuncle Pond and McKinstry Pond Dam, McKinstry Pond algae treatment have been on the radar. The dam is also on our radar, just don't have the million plus to fix it. Carbuncle Pond was treated August 6th for blue-green algae, but we also had recent water results and though they had to close the beach to swimming actively because the E. coli counts were high. And also McKinstry Pond will have its aquatic herbicide treatment scheduled for September 16th, which is a Thursday, and it will be closed to swimming, boating and fishing. The next item is just to reaffirm the great work that our Eagle Scouts do. As you recall, I brought up the fact that Samuel Zostin was requesting the Board to improve and install little libraries on town properties. And if you go over to the library, you go onto Jocelyn Park, he's completed that project. He's actually installed four libraries, one at the elementary school and the other, two at the elementary schools and then the park and the library. And he's done a great job, he kept communicating with me and wanted to make sure that it looked, you know, good, it was situated good. I want to thank our library director for working very closely with him and I'd like to thank him for bringing our attention to what is really a nice thing to do for the town. And then I would be remiss, even though this happened on August 7th for Purple Heart Day, the Esposito Brothers from the DPW were hard at work on a weekend to make sure that we honored our Purple Heart veterans and they lit up the bandstand as well as our town hall in purple. If you went by and I provided you with, as I was driving by around 6 o'clock, I could see it was already lit up, wanted you to see that. I want to thank them for wanting to honor Americans who were either wounded on the battlefield or paid the ultimate sacrifice with their lives and they do this on their own and they have been, whether it was for Gold Star Mothers and families or whether it's for Purple Heart and we thank them for doing that. The last one is to let you know that the Lions Club benefit for the annual, 25th Annual Clara Barton Tournament is going to be hosted September 17th at Pine Ridge. The Oxford Lions Club do this to help the Clara Barton Recreation Facility, which helps work with children with type 1 diabetes for summer camps. But the reason why I'm mentioning it in particular is because it's going to be in the honor of Joe and Connie Tag. And so anybody that would like more information can call the actual Clara Barton Center or Lions Club or go to events@bartencenter.com and I want to say congratulations, Joe and Connie, for all the work that you do and have been doing to benefit the community. And that would conclude my Managers' Report.
Thank you very much. Selectmen's announcements, Selectman Triano. Selectman O'Boyle.
Oh, nothing, thank you.
Selectman Daniels.
I guess just put out to the community, in case there's any confusion, that there's a special election for Selectmen coming up to fill our fifth seat. So anybody who's interested and, you know, has a passion for the town and wants to see change in the town, you're highly encouraged to draw papers, get signatures and run for Selectmen. That's all I have.
The only thing I have is, is I'm going to have Dee poll the members because seeing what Samuel did, I thought it'd be nice to give him a citation. So since we can't vote on that, I'll have her reach out to everybody and if so, maybe we can have him in on our future meeting, so, and that's all I have. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion, second.
And I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, for an affirmative, we are adjourned, thank you all for coming.